Order at two minutes after seven on the twenty first of May.
Twenty.
Twenty. Twenty of May, sorry about that. Um, these are confused. Okay, so um, we'll start with introductions.
Dick Porter, Proctor.
Karen Hillstaff.
Dex Schneider, Brandon.
Sarah Pongby, Polley.
Ian Reed, Pittsburgh.
Jason B. Ball, Bravenham.
Jamars, Rotten Town.
Frank Johnson, Castleton.
David Air, Rotten City.
Leona Meyer, West Stroutland.
Judy Gilmour, Timmott.
Travis Stoddard, Dandy.
We have two people in the back.
Abby Bradish, Chinon.
Bob Richards, Altona, Alabama.
Steve. Eric Bergen, Wallingford.
Devin Neary, Executive Director.
Robert Gibbs, Hubbardton.
Larry Curcel, Mendon.
Online, we've got Bob Kerbat from IRL. Laura Black from Shrewsbury. And Linda Litten from Paulette. Welcome all. And special welcome to our newest commissioner, Jim Marsh. Welcome from Rotten Town. Thank you so much for joining.
Thank you.
Okay, so approval of the May twentieth agenda. Everybody have a chance to look at it. We, unless there were any additions, subtractions. I'd like the motion placed.
Go move.
Okay, and a second?
Second.
Hey, all those in favor, raise your hands, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, ayes have it. Thank you. Approval of the April fifteenth minutes. All receive copies of those. Any typographical errors, additions, subtractions, deletions? If not, may I have a motion?
Oh, move.
Take your pick. May I have a second? Which everyone was inside.
Okay, Ian, you made the motion.
And I'm Jason, you say.
Yeah.
Thank you. All those in favor of accepting, please signify by raising your hand or saying aye.
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 Okay, thank you. Open to the public. We have already said that Supers not here, so we will close it to the public. March twenty twenty five financial report, which was on page six of your packet.
Yes, we've given MK the night off because she's been working very hard on a bunch of stuff in which I've got an update on one of those items. So the same exact report as last month. The areas in which are high have been the same areas that have been high all year. So line four oh two is high due to those FY twenty five town dues being invoiced. Four oh three point five is low due to the lack of project development versus construction for our quest funds. Four oh three A is high due to NDA planning agreement. Four oh seven Department of Energy is low because we are no longer expecting the EECBG grant that was mixed by the federal government. Line four seventeen, US Department of Labor is low. This is our Work Six Workforce Development Grant. We just slowed a bill, but we have a plan to get through that. Line four twenty one, not budgeted, that was the credit card points. On the expense side, line five thirty five is high due to the Rutland feud sponsorship, which was not planned. Line five thirty seven, town and organizational support is high. This is again, is just the shifting our revenue from our credit cards. Line five fifty rent improvements is high, is there are ten rent payments captured. And then line five sixty insurance is high because it's paid in full. The big report is we just did a cash flow projection for the end of the year, and I am very excited to report that we will yet again be ending in the black with a pretty comfortable buffer. So kudos to MK. That's been a huge effort. This year's been the hardest to budget because of how many skate hours we've needed to support the regional plan effort. Whenever we bill more to state, we typically have less of our programmatic revenue. So everything is coming in well. The plane is landing softly. So great work there.
Thanks. Hey, Executive Directors' Report.
Okay, we got a couple of few things here to cover. First is we held two municipal training courses for Act one eighty one. Those were April sixteenth and seventeenth. Many of you all were there, so thank you for joining. We had nearly a hundred participants from around the region, which was probably one of the most successful trainings we've had. We'll talk a little bit about for those of you who didn't, weren't able to attend that training, but want to learn more about it. In our regional plan report, we'll talk about where you can access all those materials. Hopefully, all of you are signed up for our newsletter and our email list. If not, you can go onto our website for that. I have been trying to follow up on our trainings with a sort of follow up email that provides all the resources for these trainings. Because we held another one. So we did kind of packed it all in. We held our annual open meeting law training and the Vermont Secretary of State came down. That was Wednesday, May seventh. We had less show up participants, but we still had thirty for that one, which was still a decent showing. And we really appreciate that for three years now. Sarah Copeland-Hazes has been joining us down here in Rutland, which has been great. Some sad news, our energy planner Jeremy Gildrian has announced that he'll be stepping away from the RPC at the end of May. So we hope you'll join us in thanking Jeremy for all his great work in standing up a really strong energy program and especially helping to get so much money for the region with the Municipal Energy Resiliency Program. So please know that, you know, we're, we're going to try to maintain all our projects and continue. We might have a very small lag if you have open projects with Jeremy right now, but we have a plan to keep things moving along. And along those same lines, we are already hired, we have already hired a new planner, and it was our intern from last year, Sean Beatty. Many of you might have worked with Sean. He did some town planning work last summer. He just graduated from University Ohio Miami in Ohio with a planning degree and a GIS certificate. So we're really excited. He's got great energy. He'll fit in well. He'll be starting on July first. We anticipate he'll be working primarily in town planning and zoning, but he could also be doing some brownfields, energy and transportation work as well. So some exciting stuff there. New projects, the UVM Lahey Institute is launching the Vermont Evaluation of Rural Technical Assistance, VERDA, another TLA plus for your acronym, folks. We are being asked to hold two municipal focus groups to discuss technical assistance as it relates to community economic development. Really, this project is intended to assess how rural communities are accessing technical assistance and if it is effective in meeting the growing needs, especially in our rural communities. So we're going to be reaching out very shortly to fifteen municipal officials from around the region to join and share their sort of experiences and knowledge and stories. And there'll be two meetings. We'll hold an in person and a hybrid meeting. So unfortunately, we're limited to those fifteen folks based on UVM. So if you do not get an invitation, do not take it personally. We're just trying to sort of reach as far and broad an audience as we can, both geographically and experience wise. That'll likely be happening in June. Short turnaround. On the grant side, Vtrans bicycle and pedestrian grants are now available. Those are due July eleventh. It's been one of our most successful grant program areas, getting nearly four and a half million dollars over the last five years to the region. If you're interested in applying or wanting to learn more, check out this link and reach out to Ethan, our transportation planner. Some really exciting news, which happened today. The Cedar and the RPC teamed up to support the Bring Back the Trades event that happened today at Castleton University. We supported this through our Workforce Development Grant and also tabled because we're trying to recruit students from high schools for the event so that they can join the program and go through our workforce development effort. So what's really exciting is they had sixteen hundred students registered as of the time I wrote this. I talked to Lyle today. They had twenty three hundred students from around the state of Vermont. And from what I've heard from Karima and Lyle, and kudos to them both, they just have done tremendous work to make sure this was successful and met the needs of the region and the entire state of Vermont. I have a feeling that a lot of the employers will see some tangible benefits from this in that they really were there because they need employer employees. So we're hoping this will be an annual event. It was so big that I think we outgrew the Castleton space and they're already looking for something bigger. So really happy with Cedar and RPC on that. In other news, we're bringing on three interns this year. One is a repeat. He'll be working with on our regional plan. Then we have two new field technicians to help with road erosion inventories. A lot of you who are in the municipal official town planning space know that we have the next sweep of road erosion inventories. I can't believe it's time again. It just felt like the other day. So we're planning to do thirteen towns this summer and fourteen towns next summer. So this is an all hands on deck effort. These are two year grants, but we're going to try to get them done in one, just to get them done and out the door. This is for the municipal roads general permit and water quality initiatives relating to the road. And just as a reminder, I spoke about it just a minute ago, but if you're not signed up to receive our RPC newsletters, please go on our website and sign up. We're trying to get out as much information as we can, and that is the best way to do it. If you're a commissioner, we've already added your name, whether you wanted to or not. So sorry. But you cannot subscribe. I hope you don't. So that is it.
Thank you. Regional plan update?
Okay, this is gonna be sort of the bulk of our discussion tonight. So we'll get to the nitty gritty and talk about the most important part and important point. So we have just completed, well, not just, it's already been a while. April eighteenth, we completed our third revision from Task Three of the regional plan, and we're reviewing that right now. We will not kick off Task Four, and Task Four is the absolute last revision to the regional plan in totality before it goes to our graphic designer for layout and then you all it will go to in September. So there's a very narrow window left. This Task Three Rev Three is the addition of the regional plan that you all and the general public will be reviewing as of June first. So in terms of that review process, we decided to extend it for the internal steering committee to be throughout the month of May into June. Regional Plan Committee will be starting to review this soon in June, once it's in layout form versus just the word version. And like I just said, you will receive the full layout version ahead of the June meeting. So the thing I really want to talk about tonight is our kickoff of our third phase of engagement. Hopefully, a lot of you have been present at the town meetings we've been having, which have served a dual purpose. One, we're launching this last phase of engagement we're calling Alignment, which really is intended to bring all the pieces of our development together to make sure that we have the best plan possible. And the other reason we're holding these town meetings is to release the draft of the Regional Future Land Use Map. So as of tonight, we have met with twenty five of twenty seven towns in the region. And this is actually the third time that we will have met with all twenty seven towns in the region. And overall, by the end of the third phase of engagement, we will have held over two hundred town meetings or events during the course of this three year plan development. So, you know, when we said we were committed to engaging on this plan, we really tried to put our money where our mouth is. So if you were not present for those town meetings, I want to walk you through where you should go if you want to learn more about all the things that are happening right now with the regional plan. So if you log on to our website, front and center, you cannot miss it, is a button to our regional plan website. We just updated this regional plan website around the third phase of engagement. So the draft release of the full plan in layout is scheduled for June, so you can access it here. You can also sign up for our mailing list to be notified. But again, if you're on our mailing list already, you'll get that notification. So we've sort of already presented to you a few months ago about the third phase of engagement, what it means and the draft future land use map. But for folks who are new or weren't able to attend those meetings, I'll just go over some of the highlights. So our first phase of engagement was learn and assess. It was the broadest end of the bucket. We're just trying to gather as much information as possible. We had the large survey. We held a bunch of events. That helped really inform the first draft of the regional plan. So after those meetings, we collected all that information. We did a bunch of research. We started drafting the first beginning parts of the plan, especially the draft policies. So in our second phase of engagement, which we called Report Back, we released the draft policies of plan, which are really the sort of meat and potatoes, what constitutes the plan. We had a bunch of surveys out there and events that related to getting feedback on those draft policies. We took that feedback and we have been writing and writing and writing, working with the Regional Plan Committee on draft after draft after draft. And now we're finally at the point where we can release the plan, not only in just a word form, but in a full layout with all our graphics and maps. However, we recognize that not everybody is going to want to or have the appetite to read potentially four hundred pages of technical regional plan, which we understand. That is not light, easy reading. So we decided to do three levels of engagement for this final alignment phase. The first, we showed you last month, we hired a cartoonist to take our plan. This is really hard to see, so I'll try to zoom in. To take our plan and draw on our regional map the sort of highlights of the policies within our plan to demonstrate, okay, this at its core is what the plan means. And it's really just a way for folks who are not interested in diving in deeper to understand what the Regional Planning Commission is and what the regional planning, what the regional plan does. In addition, we're hoping that this graphic might inspire folks to dive a little bit deeper. So the next level of depth within our regional plan review is instead of reviewing that entire plan draft, we did a nice thing for you all, and we wrote one page chapter summaries for every chapter. It just highlights the current conditions, the future trends, the policies and the actions for every single chapter. So the hope is you might see something within the graphic that you find interesting. You decide to go to the chapter summary and say, hey, these are a little bit more digestible. I'll learn more about them. And let's say you're really interested in land use. You say, okay, based on that chapter summary, I'm now going to go read the full plan draft of each that chapter. So we're hoping this is a lot more accessible for folks. We're really asking just two essential questions out of this final plan drafts review, and that is, does the plan reflect the right economic, community economic development priorities for the region? And do those priorities make the region a place where you want to live, work and play? We have two substantial areas for you to offer open ended comments about any section of the plan, any of the data, any of the policies. And that'll be, that is a survey that is already live on our website, like the feedback poll. It's a Survey Monkey that you can fill out anytime. And if you want to fill it out now, which is the draft or the chapter summaries, you can and come back and fill it out again with a future or with the full draft, you can do that too. So we talked about that Act one eighty one training and the Regional Future Land Use Map. If you're interested, we did record that training. The YouTube recording of that training is right here on our website and the PowerPoint slides for that training are here as well. That dives much deeper than the detail we went into with your town meetings. So if you're interested in understanding why a future land use category is mapped the way it is, this will help you do that. There's also an Act one eighty one overview section as well. The future land use map itself, we have this great online ArcGIS map you can access to view the entire region. If it loads, it's a big map. And you can zoom way in and select specific land use categories, like here in Fairhaven, if you're interested in looking at the downtown. In addition, every one of our town meetings, including the date, the draft map and the presentation handout is available on this website. These are really high resolution PDFs, so you can zoom way in if you're interested in seeing more of that. So what we're asking our towns through this town meeting process was to get us comments back. So and unfortunately, it was a pretty quick turnaround. We're asking towns to do this in three weeks. And some towns weren't super happy about that, but there's a reason behind this. We kicked off this regional plan, as you all know, in the middle of twenty twenty three, years before Act one eighty one was even a thing. And the reason we have to maintain this really strict schedule is because our current regional plan will expire next June. So to meet that, we have to have this draft solidified and finalized to you all in September to submit it to the Land Use Review Board in October and then start warning our public hearing process because it takes six months from the time we warn our first public hearing to the time of adoption. So we have very little wiggle room in our sort of adoption schedule to make huge changes. That is why we have brought you so many drafts and try to engage so much because when we ask you to sort of informally approve this draft in September, we want to make sure that there are no questions. You all feel really good about it. Now, this time around, it's quite different because in the past, the Regional Planning Commission, Board of Commissioners was the only entity that had to approve the regional plan. We've had a regional plan since nineteen seventy one, and you all have been the ones to approve it ever since. Now, because of Act one eighty one, the Land Use Review Board also has to approve our plan, which is the new Act two fifty commission. So this pre-review timeline that happens in September and October, they have sixty days to review and comment on our plan. And that will be really important for us to know, will our plan meet statute, which we believe it does? And that they'll be approve it when we submit it after you adopt it in April. So that is the rationale behind why the sort of regional future, regional future land use map schedule is so tight. However, we're getting really good feedback from folks so far as to adjustments to the map. And we're starting to make some of those adjustments. So I will say thank you to everyone who's been a part of those meetings. Dave, ours is tomorrow. You're, you're one of our last meetings. I'm excited about that. We've really only had a couple towns out of the twenty seven really have an issue with sort of the process and really what it's come down to is there's an issue with the law. They're unhappy with Act one eighty one, and we understand that. It's imperfect at best. However, it's the framework in which we have to operate, or else our plan will not be legal. And all the benefits from Act one eighty one will not come to fruition if we do not have a regional plan. So the stakes are pretty high because the benefits are really great for many of our towns. So I want to make sure that you all are fully aware of all the resources and the happenings. Once we're done with these town meetings, in June, we'll be doing a bunch of pop up tabling events at throughout the region. We're planning to do what Karen, anywhere between ten fifteen in June. So we're gonna be hitting events in Polley, Rotten Town, Wallingford, all over the place. So why this is important for you all to know, well, you need to be aware that we're sending you the draft in June. That'll be important for us to review over the next few months of the summer so that you're prepared in September to feel good about pre-adopting the plan informally adopting it. And so that you're aware of when you talk to your town, when you're out in the public, you can help inform the general public and other municipal officials about where the information is and what the goal is of this last engagement phase. Thoughts, questions, feelings on this effort?
Outside of the fact that it's a lot of work, a lot of effort, and you are doing a great job. Any other comments?
Well, thank you so much for your help. This is not a plan that we are doing alone. It's a plan that you all have a huge hand in. So thank you, thank you.
Excellent. Great. Regional Committee Report.
So before the committee, we're three different applications. The first one was a Bell Atlantic Mobile Systems Tower that had already been approved, so we really didn't do anything with that one. And the second was a Vertex Tower on for a west in Castleton, Vermont. The third was the installation of a wireless telecommunications equipment tower. I'm sorry, equipment on an existing tower, I believe.
Yes.
On five eighty one Stewart Road South in Mount Holly. We concluded that there was no substantial impact. And they did conform with the local and regional plans. So.
One, one edit there. The first project passed in for a was found to have substantial regional impact, but did conform.
Did.
Yep. And then the other one, no substantial impact, and it conformed.
And it conformed. Okay. So we'll move forward and Devin, would you be writing a?
Yep. So the recommendation.
A letter. The recommendation would be that Devin would write
A letter of support.
And we need a motion for that. So can we have a motion?
A motion.
Okay, and may we have a second? On the recommendation to move forward to write the letters.
Let's start with it.
All right. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it. Thank you. Okay, Executive Finance Committee Report.
All right. So the Executive Finance Committee met not once, but twice this month. Fun for them. For the first time in a long time, we actually didn't have a quorum. We had some conflicts with scheduling and some folks who were sick. So last Monday, we met, but we didn't have a quorum, so it was informational purposes only. We decided to meet again just before this meeting today at five thirty with only one agenda item. And that was the parental leave policy. So there was a motion by Allaire and seconded by Minor to motion to recommend to the full board adopting the parental leave policy as drafted. A little bit of background on this one, this was a policy that we discussed last June. And we didn't have sufficient language drafted, so the executive committee made a motion to direct myself and Mary Kay to draft the policy for this fiscal year. Number of reasons sort of delayed that effort. And now we have that draft policy. It has been reviewed over the last two meetings by the executive committee and our attorney as well. The policy basically is a four week paid paternity maternity policy for birth of a child and fostering of a child. And that four week period has to be taken within a twelve month period after adoption, fostering or birth. It will run concurrently with the It will run concurrently with the Vermont parental and family leave policy uh, that we currently have adopted. So this plan, although it is drafted standalone, will be part of our entire employee handbook under the benefits section.
Any discussion?
I have a question, um, so the policy as it reads is that it is in place after. Birth, adoption or placement of a child, children, so. In this, in a case where you had an eligible employee that needed to take parental leave policy prior to birth happening, um. Would that create something that would be eligible under the, this policy, the way that it's written?
Was something that, it was something. This is all immediately following. So anything that would happen before would fall under our Vermont parental and family leave policy.
So the, the, the leave policy allows the time off, but it doesn't allow the benefit. Am I reading that correctly?
What benefit, sorry?
The paid parental leave.
The paid parental leave would only exist after the birth.
Right, so in, in a situation where an employee needed to start their parental leave prior to, uh, you know, a medical um, situation. That was related to um, their pregnancy, this would not apply.
This would not apply, but that is a interesting point. Now, in those cases, I believe our Vermont parental family leave would apply and. Our normal sick time would apply as well, or short-term disability, so there's a few categories that somebody could fall into. If they had medical leave of absence before the birth of a child.
If they had the sick time.
If they had the sick time, yeah, and if they didn't, then it would fall under the short-term disability or the Vermont parental and family leave time.
Right, but the, the financial benefit is.
Right, right, yeah.
It doesn't sound as, so is the disability policy part of the um, employment package?
Yes, you're talking about our normal.
Yeah.
Short-term disability policy, yeah.
A disability policy for someone who was put on medical leave prior to giving birth.
Yes.
Would come into play first.
I believe so, if you're eligible, um, and I can pull up that policy if we need to. I think that is an interesting sort of consideration, though, that if it's related to. That is not something our attorney mentioned, that was possible, um. I guess I would look to you all if that's a change that you would wanna make and what provisions would apply. Is there a certain timeline?
It's an interesting question, uh, I, I guess my concern would be, when would it kick in and under what circumstances, um? And, and, and is it uh, applicable in other instances, you said we kind of mirrored this from other. Family leave policies.
Yep.
That are already in place.
Yep.
So do they cover the instance that you're bringing up?
No, well, at least not the ones that we modeled after.
Right.
Um. Now that, I do wanna just pull up our. Handbook, see what it says. And we are planning to bring a suite of handbook policy updates um, in June, as we normally do. Um, so this could be an edit that we could promote or add in June as well. Um, cause this is really meant to be in living document, so let me just look here. So on occasion, employee finds it necessary to be out of work due to a personal illness or. To care for a family member who has a serious health condition, the employee eligible for family leave. A VPFL ass- leave of absence may also be granted during employee's own pregnancy care for a newborn or placement of child. For the adoption of childcare, um, for the purposes of this policy, if family is defined, yada, yada. Unpaid VPFL leave is unpaid unless employees choose accumulated paid time off as vacation or sick time. Employees are responsible for timely manner of forming, and let's see about short-term disability. So that runs twelve weeks unpaid. And we have Vermont short-term family leave, the SFL. This is defined as unpaid leave, not to exceed four hours in any thirty-day period and not to exceed twenty-four hours during a twelve-month period. Measured forward from the date the leave begins. So that is to participate in preschool or school activities directly related to academics, to attend or accompany employees. Immediate family routine medical agenda appointments, to accompany employees parental spouse, parental in-law, in-law appointment, appointments. To respond to a medical emergency involving following the employees' immediate family. So it sounds like it's more short, short-term family leave. So yeah, it seems like somebody would fall into one of those two categories.
I think my um, my point is that. If you have a female employee who is eligible for this four weeks of paid parental leave. And that person is put on a medical leave.
Yeah.
Through just, you know, the situation of carrying that pregnancy. They may be required to take time off prior to actually giving birth.
Yeah, that's super common.
To make it, you know, a more um. Uh, I can't figure the right word, but to make it more fair, I think to uh, to someone who is actually carrying a baby and having a pregnancy that. Is put on leave, it would make sense that that would be able to be taken prior to actually giving birth.
Yeah.
Do we have short-term disability, though?
I think we do.
So I'm wondering, because then it would be construed as medical at that point. But I don't know how, what the waiting period to take short-term disability is.
Right.
Cause theoretically, you could take that twelve weeks unpaid leave, but then short-term disability might. Add in the payment benefit, if there was a waiting period.
Usually at least a week.
Yeah.
Before, before you begin any kind of payment.
Devin, is this something that needs to be approached tonight?
Um, ideally, that's what we had said, only that we have it sort of marked as May twenty-first, but that doesn't necessarily happen. There is this one, in the event of a female employee who herself is giving birth, the four weeks of paid parental leave will commence at the conclusion of. Any short-term disability leave benefit provided to the employee for the employee's own medical recovery following birth, that's still following birth.
Might just be changed, language, bring it up with the attorney?
Yeah, I mean, I'm very happy to bring that edit as well. So.
So shall we take this until next month?
Certainly can.
Motion?
So moved.
Seconded.
I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor to table the, to table this?
Alright.
Bye.
Any opposed? Thank you, Laura, alright. Jason, did you make the motion?
Yes. Thank you, Sarah, that was a great, great catch, and I think that's something we should have in there, absolutely.
Hey, we don't have any executives?
No, Lyle is taking a much-needed break after being up at four AM for the bring back the trades event, so he's earned a night on.
So can, any commissioner updates?
I think we should let him go early, since next month will be a big one.
I do too, next month is gonna be a big one, grab some sleep, get some espresso.
Hmm.
Okay, so I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Hey, we are adjourned at uh, seven forty-two P M.
Alright.
Thank you, mom. Bye, guys.